Collins, we are going to talk about the school restructuring.
I also would like to thank everyone for being here at this time. And we will start with a presentation which is a follow-up to the last presentation that provides more detail regarding what the governance plan looks like. And then we will have another presentation which is even more detailed, with detailed action steps at the February 25th Board meeting, and followed by the last community forum which is scheduled for March 13th, which will also, I'm sorry, March 14th, which will be a very similar to the presentation that will be done at the Board meeting on February 25th. So at this time, I would like Veronica Lake, Deputy Superintendent, to begin the presentation. We will be here until 8:30. And the presentation will be approximately an hour in length, followed by a half hour of questioning.
So thank you for continuing to come out. And as we walk just a little bit closer to the final action plan, tonight I'm going to share with you some additional details that have been put into place regarding district restructuring. So in terms of leading change, again, we've progressed over time. And so tonight I'm talking to you a little bit about what this is going to look like. Before, we started with this, or during this year, as we moved into the next year for restructuring, there will be some changes. And I want to be able to share with you how it looks right now and how they look in the future. Previously, decisions were made at the district level. Budgets were made at the district level. Curriculum alignment was done at the district level. Centralized professional development plans were put into place. The change will be that principals make decisions based on their school needs and based on their school improvement plans. They will have greater control over their building budgets. Again, the research shows that both connections between what's happening in a school, that school looking at their own data and making decisions about what will change and what will remain the same, is a very, it's a research-based way of ensuring that achievement does happen because you're dealing with things right at the heart of where learning takes place. We're looking at principals participating in curriculum alignment, as well as school teams identifying their professional development needs. In some schools, if you look at your school data and you need to place an additional focus on math, then it needs to be determined by that building principal and that building team what those strategies are going to be and what professional development they need in order to see improvement within your school. So shared leadership. We're going to replace what we currently call the building leadership team, or BLT, will be replaced with the federal terminology which is school improvement teams, with different responsibilities than what the building leadership teams have right now. Some of those responsibilities will be the same, but there will be some additional responsibilities that they don't currently have at the site-based level. Principals will interview and select those school improvement team members. We will give them criteria and some guidance on what that should look like. And then we'll work with them to determine exactly what those teams should look like in order to further their improvement efforts. Each school will identify one to two parents to participate on the school improvement team as a partner. Our school improvement teams will share responsibility of implementing school improvement strategy, as well as monitoring progress. Here's a quick visual of what site-based leadership looks like. We've shared this with our principals early in the year. Principals did some training with their school staff on site-based management and what that meant to them and how it would be implemented in the building. And just kind of in a nutshell, it gives an example of what we will do at a district level regarding supporting principals to build their capacity, ensuring that alignment between the buildings is done through a data-driven process, as well as monitoring how things are done and holding principals accountable for that work being done. Here, the principal as a structural leader develops a shared leadership responsibilities around school improvement with their school team, based on their school data and what's needed to improve achievement in their buildings with their students. Use data to identify focus areas. Some school's focus area might have to be that we're going to focus on comprehension. Maybe overall, when we look at it, comprehension, reading comprehension wasn't as strong in our school as another area. So they need to be able to make decisions about what they're going to do to improve achievements there. Using data to identify areas of focus. Multiple sources of data. We never use one source of data. So while we talk a lot about ISAT and PSAE, so our, both our state assessments, we talked a lot about those. That's just one piece of information that we use to determine where we're strong, where we're not, and then what we need to focus on. Determine the steps of action. And then using their budgets to improve their school improvement plan. So we wouldn't, as a district, say, "You need to spend more money on X," when Y is what they need. So focus on restructuring. The focus on restructuring moving forward is going to be what, when, and how we're going to teach, and then what, when, and how we're going to know that students learn. So it'll be very focused. Before, and you've heard a lot of these things, and you've been here on the last several weeks, you've heard a lot about how we've done it and what we've done. And before, again, at the central office level, you know, some decisions were made and all of the decisions may not have been coming. But no formal review process or curriculum. Most districts have in place a formal curriculum review cycle, where every so many years, you're beginning to look at your resources, you're beginning to look at what you're supposed to teach and how you're going to assess it. And we haven't had that process in place here in the district. So we've developed a process this year for curriculum review, which is why you keep hearing about literacy is a very thorough process and will begin with math in the fall. And so the idea is that over every couple of years, every five or six years, you're recycling all of your materials to measure what their line of course is current. More focused, there was more focus on intervention than core instruction. And we know that our state assessments are based on what every kid is supposed to know, not based on the skills that a student has that may not be at that core level. And so those are some things that's changing. The difference will be that we're looking at a newly aligned literacy and math curriculum from follow math immediately. Until that time, staff will continue to work on the Illinois learning standards, which are aligned to Common Core. Working with that building principal and the school improvement teams, working with their grade-level teams, will focus on how the math occurs and all that and will provide support at the district level while we're implementing the literacy and going through the math review process. Common material and professional development, again, those things weren't common before. We're moving forward and saying we didn't have some common materials that are aligned with Common Core. This is pretty new to us, but again, Common Core is new to us as well. Focus on intentional instruction. Again, what is it that Veronica is supposed to know and do well? How are you going to teach it? And then how are you going to assess whether or not she learned it? And then that gives the teachers some reflection on, you know, maybe I need to change a few things to ensure that all kids are good and I know it's a group of students or not. Or it makes a couple principals understand, you know, if we have a group of students that seem to not be getting this in this way, how do we look at what we're doing with professional development to ensure that our teachers are better prepared to teach in this way? And again, that won't be new for just us here around Lincoln. Everybody across the nation is struggling with that, with this Common Core thing. We'll have fewer interventions tied in line to the core, yet flexible for all students. Again, we've done a lot of kind of divide and conquer, again, not just in Lincoln. It's probably, it's happened in many places where we're looking at, you know, if students are learning English as a second language, we use these materials or we've approached it this way. We're saying that everybody has a standard and then we decide what kind of additional support this person needs and this person needs in order to meet that standard. English language learner, as well as special ed, will use, will start, will begin with Core. Every student has a right to the general curriculum. And it is our role as educators to determine what additional things are needed in order for them to fully engage in that general curriculum. And then a data system to link multiple sources of data. Right now, we're crunching data. Unless it's a state assessment, there are usually a few people sitting at computers trying to, you know, use Excel, pulling this and pulling that. And it takes a long time to pull a lot of those things together. With a data warehouse, we will be able to program the information that we want to know and have reports and data of multiple sources at the hands of principals, the school improvement teams, and teachers so that they can make valid decisions. I talked a little bit about the curriculum review process and I wanted to take you through just a snapshot of what that looks like. And again, we started this year between 12, 13 with literacy because if you cannot read, then, I mean, that's the foundation for everything else. So we know for sure, we got to build out how we're teaching literacy and what we're using and be able to, a common and standard in the way to do that with our materials. So that process is already under review. A recommendation will come before the board in March, early March, late February. And then the PD for that, the implementation, will begin right away in the fall. But at the same time, we'll begin the math review process. And you'll see, again, how over the years, this happens. And then you recycle back through it. So that's the curriculum review cycle that every district should have in place so that you're staying on top, staying current with your methodology, staying current with the alignment, and staying current with your resources that support the education you're trying to teach. I want to just kind of, and I'll talk about this a little bit later on in another slide, but some people may say, "Why are we waiting to do some of these things?" Well, again, you have to start somewhere. And these are very thorough, very thorough, very time, not sensitive.
Intensive.
Intensive, thank you. I was having a brain drop thing. Very time-intensive because once you go through this, you also have to start pulling your curriculum documents together and then looking at pacing and then thinking about, you know, when you look at your data and decide where kids are getting stronger, where they're not, what are you going to start with first, what's been tested most frequently? Because those things that aren't tested most frequently, we take that as meaning it's important to know, but it's not of the most importance. And so there's a lot that goes into that each time. With technology, the belief is that technology has to be embedded. It's definitely part of this. It doesn't really stand alone. But the reason we put technology down here at the very bottom is because this would be actual courses that are, are technology-based courses where you're actually teaching students how to use the technology differently. But technology will be integrated on everything. So again, it's a staggering but continuous process. K through eight math stats. The new Common Core standards aligned documents were created and distributed to staff at the start of the school year, last year. Staff met right here at the high school in different rooms and went through. The work has been done this summer prior to that. Site-based decisions regarding attending any professional development with our regional office on the math documents because there are math teachers across the county beginning to implement this work. And we have staff participating. And as principals see fit, they're determining who should participate in these and what they're going to bring back and how they're going to implement those things in the building. They're collaborating and implementing curriculums and the resources during this process. And our current textbooks and workbooks are becoming out of print and they're not aligned with the rigor of Common Core. So that's another reason why we're handling this at the site level while we're being very thorough about the literacy. Again, in the fall, we start the same process with math. So it's not, we're not doing anything. We shouldn't say, we shouldn't hear anybody saying, "We're not teaching math." That's not, that's not true. We're just saying that it's being handled right now at the building level, looking at their students, looking at the Illinois standards, which are aligned with Common Core, and then deciding how they use the materials that they have currently to teach the math standard. Up and coming in the fall, there's going to be a K through eight review, very thorough, like we did. It's an expedited review, actually, just like we've done with the literacy. Typically, it would take a whole year to do that. And we've developed an expedited process and will do the same thing with math. So what about the other subjects? Working towards Common Core standards, we, the sciences, those study standards are available for grades six through eight. Science is in draft review right now at the state level. And so at some point in the spring, we expect that they will become final. And that's in place for six through eight, but not K through five. In K through five, Common Core standards has those, those subject areas are integrated into the, into the standards for grades K through five. So a good example of that might be if you're working on a comprehension, if you're working on a comprehension strategy. Many years ago, like when I was in school, many years ago, we might have been focused on, like just for example, Clifford the Red Dog. Everybody who's been here has seen or heard something about Clifford the Red Dog, right? Rather than being focused on what Clifford is doing or what happened with Clifford, you might have, even at a third or fourth grade, something in there about the Civil War. And what you'd be looking at in terms of the Civil War might be that at that level, what might have been the impact on the economy at that time? So that's a lot different thinking than what we've ever done before. I had an opportunity to take, talk to some of my former colleagues in the assessment world who have been looking at these new next-generation assessments. And it's pretty interesting. There's a lot of thinking that goes into solving a problem. They're less about having a right or wrong answer, but more about what are you thinking about? And then how do you set things up to solve problems? And that's probably a lot more like what really happens to us in the work world, right? It's not always a right or wrong answer. We wish there were. But we probably wouldn't have had as many meetings if everything was about a right or wrong answer. But it's about the process that you use to get to the best answer. And so that's the kind of thinking that our kids are going to have to do. So the standards in history and social studies, science, and the technical subjects are integrated into the K through five, into K through five standards. So the literacy series that our teams are out there looking at now, will be, they'll be looking to see how well the series integrates these things here. And then move, and then move forward with how we're going to implement that and decide which one is actually going to be the best one. The reason for current focus on literacy, followed by math and standards are expected, as students are going to read, write, business, speak in all subject areas. Educational jargon, you may have heard somebody talk about disciplinary literacy or learning within the discipline of science or learning within the discipline of math or learning within the discipline of social studies. And that's what that means. It's a different type of reading that you may do in science than it may be in social studies. And so Common Core has integrated those things into standards. Low reading ability affects all content areas. If you're struggling with reading, it's pretty difficult for you to solve a math problem, reading problem, because you're having a difficult time reading it. You might know how to do the computation, but after you struggle through reading, you figure out exactly what you're being asked to do in that question. So for your views, and again, this is, some of you may have printed this out already, otherwise I know that it's on the website. These are some things that you can check out on your own, just to see, just to see what's out there. Another really good tool is the PTA organization, ptaw.org. If you go to ptaw.org, you can see what the Common Core standards are. And they have documents there for parents. And they have those documents in each content area, as well as in Spanish, Spanish. So impact of restructuring, planning and improvements with I standards. Is the planning and monitoring, monitoring progress. We're going to, again, we're going to have to do things differently than what we have done before because we need to be sure. We need to be very explicit about what we're going to teach, when we're going to teach it, and how we're going to know whether or not Veronica learns. And so principals will provide expectations for planning and collaboration and feedback. You've heard a lot about teachers needing additional collaborative time so that they can do more of this planning and get on the same page of how they're teaching things and practice together and share information together. And so, again, part of this role as a site-based leader, structural leader, is to set the expectations for that planning and, and, and the feedback. Teachers will plan collaboratively and submit group slash individual plans to the principal. In order to be sure that what is supposed to be taught is being taught, that's another layer of accountability. So we would be asking that those plans be submitted to the principal for review of what is happening. Is, when I come to a principal and ask the question, "Where are you in terms of our pacing guides for September?", principals should be able to tell me that. Should be able to tell me that for every classroom teacher. Now, does everybody need to be locked and set? No. If we are really monitoring as we should and we're adjusting instruction as we should, we should generally be in about the same place. Recognizing though, that there may be in your classroom sometimes students who don't have that prior knowledge and you may not be able to move as fast on some of the content as another person. But in general, we should kind of be around the same place. But only the principal as a site-based leader is going to know that. And then working with that school improvement team to determine, you know, maybe we need a little extra time here, maybe we don't, and what other professional development needs. Collaborative teams will make new agendas and amendments. Accountability, again, we heard a lot about who's holding who accountable, how are we going to know? And so we're saying that documentation needs to occur on all levels. What it does is it helps the building principal, again, stay on top of what's happening there. It helps the school improvement team determine that, yes, we are moving in the direction that we say we're going to. And it helps us support the principal with what needs to happen in the building to ensure that students are growing as they should. With these new Common Core assessments, we can expect that we're going to see a little bit of a drop before we see huge growth on state assessments. So while we know that's important, it's either more important to us to know that day by day, week by week, month by month, you know where your child is, we know where students are, so that we can be assured that we're improving. Collaborative teams will share learning targets with parents through a variety of communication. Again, if I'm supposed to, if I'm, if there's, if I'm teaching a fourth-grade classroom and there's a research unit in this classroom in this, during this time, and it's going to be really important that your child is learning research skills, we want to make sure that you are aware of that as parents ahead of time so that you know how to support your student, how to ask questions at home, and, you know, to communicate back with us when students are not feeling comfortable with something or if you think they need more time. Monitoring. So principals will set expectations and monitor collaborative plans. Principals and school teams will monitor and adjust the plans based on student data. School governance, based on our needs, will occur at the district and school level four or five times during the year. And it's another way for us to check, checkpoints to say, "Yes, we're on target. We're moving in the direction that we said we were going to move in. We need additional professional development in this area. Maybe we can skip this area." Again, it's just being diagnostic and prescriptive about, about the practice of teaching and about the evidence of whether or not students are learning. So data continues. When we talk about data, there are different levels at which data are used. And they move from infrequent. And in this infrequent box here, we mean, these things are given once a year. You know, so your state level sets. And, you know, little knowledge, less specific students. This is just kind of comparing, meaning to, you know, to everybody else across the state or, or across the nation if it happens to be drawn or. Then we move to this level, which interim is a little more frequent. So it gives us, we use these assessments to give us information in the beginning. And then another checkpoint so that we know there were some problems made here. And then another checkpoint to see, you know, additional problems we made. These assessments that are currently used in that way are your measure of academic progress or your math in WBA. Have you seen those? And if you follow those along the time, you get an assessment in September. And then you get another assessment in December. And we should be able to see from September to December that my child's Lexile score, which is for reading, the reading level that they're at, has increased, that my child's RIT score or, you know, where, where I am compared to other students across the nation should increase. And so we should be seeing growth along the way. And the goal for us would be to meet or exceed what we call typical growth. And so just an example of typical growth would be where a kid should typically be if everything went perfectly throughout the year. Typically, maybe I would have gained five, five points and I maybe have moved from a 214 to a 270. That's just a, probably not even an accurate example, but that's kind of my knowledge. You want to make sure that you're seeing those scores go up. And if you see them go bad, then we need to really start asking some questions. Why do you think this is? What might have happened? So that you know that it could have been just a day that my kid didn't feel so great, didn't do so well, or is there really something else going on? And then the more frequent assessments. These more frequent assessments are, these are things that classroom teachers do every single day. Every day. Sometimes it's in writing. Sometimes they just kind of sit down with the student and have a conversation. Sometimes they're noticing things. So there are a variety of ways that this piece happens. And this, right here, the more frequent assessments are those assessments that would be a part of those collaborative conversations, those times that principals are meeting with their school teams. They're looking more at this because this is going to tell you how well you see growth here and helps you anticipate what you may see here. A balanced assessment model, and you're here to talk about this a lot. In a balanced assessment model, you're looking at the different type of assessments and you, and you're lining them up with who needs to know this information and who uses this information for what. So in a balanced assessment model, your classroom assessment, the stuff that I've been showing you, more frequent stuff, you know, this is we're making instructional decisions today, tomorrow, next week, three weeks from now. you know, this is where making instructional decisions today, tomorrow, next week, three weeks from now. The interim district assessment evaluates students' progress towards a benchmark. So it's kind of looking out in time. Veronica should be able to multiply and divide by five-digit numbers. Right? That's projecting ahead of time. And then each time we give it, you get a chance to know how close Veronica is getting to multiplying and dividing by five-digit numbers. And then finally, you know, those, those end-of-year assessments, or whatever they give them, depending on the state that you're in, let you know how well Veronica has learned the content for that grade level for that year. In terms of decision-making, classroom assessments are most often used with teachers, students, support staff, parents. Again, this is the day-to-day work, this is the mini reading, this is the hard, hard stuff. The interim assessments help classroom teachers, those principals, make decisions about maybe changes they need to make, what we need to do to move forward, is what we're just working. These assessments are used for decision-making for the superintendent, other district leaders, teachers, principals, again here, so that you see how well your kids are progressing. In terms of policy decision-making, the smaller groups of assessments is how school boards, superintendent, and legislation, and, you know, large groups make programmatic or big decisions about how we need to move on, or how data changes. And that would generally be like your ISAP or your ACT. So mandatory assessments that everybody takes would be high state assessment. So for elementary and middle school, that's ISAP. For high school is PSAE, the Prairie State Achievement Exam, which included in that is the ACT, which is a norm reference college readiness, a college readiness test, IAA. We have to have alternative assessments for students who have an IP, who may need a different accommodation, because again, we still have to measure how well they're growing towards the standards. And so they have an alternative assessment access. We are required to assess how well our students are acquiring the English language, how they are progressing. And so these are required for those who are students. Our district assessments, we have the math assessment. Explore and plan, you may or may not have heard of those, but they are, you know, sisters and brothers in the ACT suite. So with ACT, these are all ACT assessments. Explore is the first level of assessment, which is generally given in the eighth or the ninth grade. It gives you an idea of how well kids are progressing towards college career readiness standards. Plan is getting, again, you're giving them a tenth grade, it's just before they take the ACT, so you have some idea about where those students are performing before they take the ACT. And then in the eleventh grade, they take the PSAE, which is, again, has ACT included in it. Spanish language arts, this is new, a new state requirement, where any student that is taught in a bilingual classroom is going to be required to take a Spanish language arts assessment. They want to know how well the student is progressing in Spanish, because in those bilingual classrooms, instruction, the majority of instruction is given in Spanish. And so now the state and the federal government are saying, well, since you're giving instruction in Spanish, we want to know how well students are acquiring the Spanish language, because the idea behind bilingual education is that you're teaching students in their native language, so that it's easier for them to bridge into the English language. Prepare for the new state assessment twenty fourteen fifteen. I shared a little bit about, I shared a little bit with you already about that, and what that's gonna look like. Those will primarily be given on the computer. So kids are taking the math assessment right now on the computer, so that won't be, you know, this won't be new to them. But what they will have to do in those assessments is probably pretty different than anything that they've ever done before. And so that's part of the shift with Common Core, is that there's also a shift with the way that we test. Site-based assessments, progress monitoring tools, and the variety of ways that principals and their school teams have decided that we're going to check periodically to see how well kids are moving. Some of them may have said, you know what, let's make an assessment ourselves and see if Veronica did this from this point to this point. Some of them may have said, hey, let's get an A's web to determine if Veronica moved from this point to that point. And we're saying that in terms of progress monitoring, because that has to be so close to the classroom level, that they need to make those decisions. Me, or anyone else in central office, wouldn't know. It's not, we're not the best ones to make that decision about those level assessments. Formative assessment, a formative assessment could be that a teacher's just walking around and noticing that Veronica did this when I, when I asked her to, and she was able to do it. That's a formative assessment. It's not necessarily something that's written down. It could be done by an observation, it could be done by a project that Veronica completes or something like that. And again, these things are done at the classroom. Parent and community engagement. We are asking that, requiring that, part of our action plan moving forward. Each school will develop a parent engagement plan, and we will provide parameters from the district level on what those parent engagement plans should include. Communicate expectations for parent involvement. Parents have said, we want to be involved, and want to know what we can do. And so we will be working with principals to really figure out, you know, what does that look like, what are the expectations? And I know that there's some parent groups that have already started to meet in the community about what parent engagement should look like. Provide parent training academy on curriculum and assessment. We've heard from you, and we've heard that you wanna know more about the curriculum stuff that we talked about, the assessments and what they mean. And so we'll put those things into place. And then continue to build community partnerships. Through our partnerships, we've been, we're, we're able to realize far more than what we could do on our own. And those partnerships are giving our kids opportunities in the community to do things that align with college career readiness, helping kids get a little more in touch with what their interests are, and, and bringing that information back to school. District level planning. We need to establish common K eight master school day schedules. We've got, you know, some of our schedules are a little bit all over the place. So we need to standardize a little bit more of that, so that we can say for sure, we know that we've got X amount of time for instruction. We know that schools are using X amount of time for instruction, and, and do that through setting up master schedules. Maximize and align the instructional day. For instance, if students are supposed to get out of school at three o'clock, the bell rings at three o'clock, and then they go home. We're not preparing for them to, we're not bringing them from classroom to two forty-five to be on the bus by the break. The bell rings at three, then they're going home. So we wanna maximize that day, make sure that every single moment that we can get for instruction that, that we're doing that. Maximize resources for program needs. Anything that we don't need and that we don't use will have to go, so that we can use those resources to do, to do other things. Provide continual services at each school to limit student transitions each year. Right now, for some of our special education programs, there may be a classroom in building A, or let's say L, and then for first grades. And if, if there's not a program in that building for second grade, that student has to now go to Murphy's. If there's not the next level at Murphy's, that student then now has to go to getting him. And we're saying that that's a lot of transition. We don't want kids moving around. We want them in their neighborhood schools as to the extent possible. And sometimes in terms of saving dollars, you're not able to always do that, if they're not the adequate numbers. But we certainly want to look at making sure that we're, we're having fewer transitions for students by making sure that those classrooms are available in those schools. For special ed and class for English language learners. If a student is an English language learner at a level one, at a level two, they may have to go to another building for level three. And again, we're saying we need to work that out through that whole master scheduling thing, and then make sure that we've got the adequate number of programs in those buildings, so that we can reduce the number of transitions and maximize instruction for students. Communicate comprehensive program model for English language learners and special ed. Anybody should be able to say to, to you, what is, what is an English language learner's program look like? What are the services that students receive? How do they get? How do you know if they affect? Same thing with special ed, same thing with Janet, where they make everything on an even playing field, and then provide the additional support that you need to make that happen. Develop transportation schedules. We need to develop staffing needs for interventions and teacher collaboration time. Again, what students need more, if we're giving everybody core instruction, there's always gonna be somebody who needs a little bit more support, or who needs a little bit more experience. So we've got to, to look at our staffing and try to reconfigure things so that we're able to do both of those. And then determine what summer planning or curriculum work is needed to make all these things happen and enjoy stuff. And so in terms of, you know, what's moving forward, continuous school improve, continuous improvement plan, we've heard we talk a lot about school improvement, and really, this is the cycle of school improvement. You, you start with the planning phase, you look at all of your data, you diagnose what your strengths are, you diagnose what your challenges are, and you create a plan. A very focused plan. You can't throw everything in that plan. You really have to say, you know what, this is great, I really need to work on these things first. This is gonna be critical stuff. And develop that plan, then you do. You start working at it, you start implementing, you start trying things out. And then you take a look at that implementation. How was it done? How, how are people responding to it? Is it making a difference in studies that we affected that? And then you take a look at that information again, and you, and you act. Your actions may change. You may need some interventions, you may need some additional professional development, you may need more time on this particular area. So it's this continuous cycle that you go through on a, on a daily basis, where teams look at things, changing their strategies over time, to make sure that you're getting at what you're gonna get. Okay, all right. The state has just approved new cut scores for ISAP. And if you recall, I, I talked to you a little bit about the change in standards. Common Core standards are a lot more difficult than what we've done before. So nationally, there's, there's that movement towards college career readiness, and that's where the Common Core standards were built on. And so for years, the ISAP, again, not just in Illinois, but most state assessments have not been, in grade K through eight, have not been aligned with national standards. So they've been a little more than national standards. So in order to raise the bar and prepare us for the types of things that our students should be able to do in terms of being college career ready, the state has increased the cut scores. One of the documents that, you, you got a couple of documents when you came in. One of those was a letter from me describing what this is all about. You also got a, some frequently asked questions. And then you received some performance levels, a document that's got performance levels. The slide that has, look the blue gray, and it's got twenty twelve cut scores. If you look at that, just look at third grade where it says meet standards. It's on the blue gray side. And at third grade, for the past several years, or at least during twenty twelve, if you scored between a one ninety-one and a two twenty-six, you were considered a student who was meeting the standards. Now flip over to the blue side, little purple. During the twenty thirteen school year, again, the state has raised the bar so that they, so that we can see how much more difficult or how much more rigorous these standards are that students need to know. And you will see that most students who fell in the meet category, unless you were way up high end, you're probably not going to meet the standard this year. Not just so for Illinois. Some states, some states moved to the higher standard marks a couple of years ago. Others are still coming along. It doesn't mean that your child knows less. What it means is that when you compare to a higher standard, and I think you've heard our high school friends talk about this over the years, is that you can't compare the ISAP scores to these ACT scores, because they're two different, they're two different tests. They don't mean the same thing. So that's getting us a little closer to when our kids take that test in the eleventh grade, now we see what they, you know, they gotta make some huge leaps and bounds in order to be prepared for that in the eleventh grade. What that means is that we've just gotta, we've, we've gotta focus on the way that we're teaching, and this plan, and I talk about it throughout accountability, I talked about the planning, I talked about the monitoring, is because we do know that that is going to be difficult. It, it is not impossible. I talked to a colleague of mine just this past weekend who has been working on, working with a school that, in a district where, in state, where the sta, the higher standards were put into place two years ago, and, you know, most people were devastated to see how low a percentage of students were meeting or receiving. But here we are, two years later. They stayed the course, they stayed focused on what was happening in that classroom every single day for every kid, and adjusting, as teachers do all the time, having conversations about what needs to change and when. And this year, on their state assessment, he saw huge leaps and jumps in, in, in his, in his building, where he has a population very similar to what we have here. So I wanted to say that, so that we all know that it can be done, it's not an impossible task, but we will have to work at it. We will have to work at it. So around the right. The five essential survey, you've probably heard about that. The five essential survey, again, is a part of, that's multiple sources of data that we use to make decisions about how we do business. The five essential survey is going to be critical for each school improvement team to hear from parents, to hear from you about what they may need to work on. We may be thinking that we need to work on this area, but that data is what you say to them, eh, maybe we really need to work a little bit more on this area. So if you haven't done it already, or your children have schools, if there are multiple schools, we ask that you do one for, for each school, because that information is gonna be used by that principal and the school improvement team to make decisions on, on how they, on their school improvement strategy.
I also would like to add, Veronica, that we have computers outside of this room for parents to use. So, and we will see computers that will be available at the schools for your use to take the survey.
Essential state waiver. Illinois has applied, many states have applied for, have received the waiver for AYP. Which is, you know, why this whole N C L B thing, which is why we ended up with these conversations around destruction in the first place. And so many districts, many states have applied to, to the federal government for a waiver and have received them. Those states that have applied for the waiver and received it, they're no longer bound by AYP, meaning that this number of students have to meet it, or you don't meet it at all. They look at how much you grow, and that really is what you wanna look at. How much are we growing? And so our state has applied for a waiver with the federal government for a waiver. And we're hoping, and they seem pretty optimistic, I was at a conference last week, they were pretty optimistic that we, that they may get this waiver, so that we hope AYP goes away, and that we are. so that the whole AYP goes away and that we are only held accountable now only because we are held accountable for growth. And again, whether we get the waiver or not, our focus is still on growth. Every, you know, if you leave the bounds, yeah, this sounds like it might be an easy task, but it's not always that way, but we're always focused on growth. And so hopefully if we get the state waiver, you know, the whole AYP thing goes away anyway and we'll be able to focus on growth doing the things that I've been trying to bring to attention. So our goal is work restructuring, it still is what we talked about all year long. And that is do we grow for every child, every single child, every child, every chance, every child. The next step for us is to align our action steps with the district and school improvement plans to revise and reflect, revise the plans to reflect our current needs. On February 25th, we will present an action plan for how these things will take place to the board. We will share that action plan on March 14th with the community and along the timeline. And then one of the accountability people for us at a system level is that we have a board education committee in place, which will be an open meeting where we are able to share a little bit more about what is happening on the academic side of the table and teaching and learning on a more regular basis. And I'm sure that will be open meetings, we still have to work out what that committee will look like and how we move over that, I believe beginning sometime this month. And so, well, when you plan that, if it doesn't grow well, you don't plan that, you look for reasons to do it grow well, you may be fertilized or you may be more, more less fun, you never blame the less. And so we say that because what we want to make sure we understand is that we're not, we're not blaming our, we're not blaming our students for where we are. We're not blaming staff for where we are. We're simply saying, this is where we are. We're simply saying we have to improve and that we gotta be lockstep, working hand in hand to make sure we do that.
At this point, Lauren, were those handouts also in Spanish? Yes, they were. Okay, thank you. We're able to take questions from the audience and we have some assistants who bring microphones around. And if you would simply raise your hand, someone will give you a microphone. So we have one here in the center here and there is a question over there. So we can get a microphone over here also, then we can have one go after the other.
Testing. You don't need to sit. Should I sit or sit?
Whatever's convenient for you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Pierce and I am a daycare provider. And I think that's a situation that we also need to talk about preschool and readiness for school, readiness for kindergarten. That's something I didn't quite hear during those meetings. And I actually went online and looked at other information because I hadn't been here before. A lot of kids come to me at age four, not knowing colors, not knowing numbers. They know a lot about cartoons, but they don't know the colors of cartoons, the numbers. So I think it's important to get that information out to the community, what is needed for your child to start school. They need to know the cut papers, that may get easier for that transition when they come into kindergarten to work on the, the rest of it, you know, what they need to do. And I think it's important to have workshops with us, daycare providers, and let us know what is needed for these young, what we need to do for these young people. Some of us do know, the information is out there. But I think maybe if we have more workshops, we can be in line for what the community needs. Another thing is, I haven't heard about discipline. There's been huge discipline problems in these schools, starting from kindergarten all the way out to school. And, I mean, my son's come home every day, I have a seven-year-old and a seventeen-year-old in this district. And my son come home every day with a report about who pulled the card, who did this, who did that. But we couldn't even do this today because the teacher had to keep stopping, keep stopping, keep stopping. How are you going forward with children that are not disciplined? How, how many times can a teacher stop a lesson to deal with a child that wants to now, a child that is using that way? So that is something we need to identify, how we're going to change that all.
Thank you. And just to respond to both of your comments, the first thing I want to do with preschool, yes, it would be right. And we have a responsibility to share with the daycare providers, but also with parents. What are the expectations for kindergarten? You know, at one time kindergarten was viewed as a place where children come to play. And that is no longer the case. There are expectations in order for children to be on target, to be where they should be at the end of kindergarten and ready for first grade. Children have to know some basic sight words, they have to know how to put words together, they have to know how to read, they also have to know how to count. And as you talk about colors, et cetera, what are those preschool skills that children need to know? And if we have not done a good job of really circulating that information, making it available on our website, as well as putting together some brochures and having meetings with daycare providers, as well as some of the preschools within the community and really advertising that that's available, we need to do a better job because it starts not when children first walk through the doors of kindergarten, but before. And how do we really educate parents so that they can do a better job working with their children before they come to school? As far as the discipline is concerned, yes, as a part of every building's school improvement plan, discipline or PBIS, and taking a look at building climate is a part of it. And I would ask anyone who has children in any of our schools to ask for that information and to see what progress is being made in those areas because we do have discipline reports that are shared with the board on a monthly basis. And each school has its own discipline reports really showing what discipline looks like within the school, what type of infractions are occurring. That's something that can be shared during some of the school-wide meetings, as well as classroom meetings, or if parents want to be with the building principal or other staff within the school to get that information. I think overall, as I've been taking a look at the reports that have been coming to the board and we do comparisons between last year and this year's data, and we're seeing an improvement. Do we wish that every child that was in every classroom was doing what they should be doing and on task 100% of the time? Yes, we do. Here again, this is another instance, not only when you talk about children's readiness for kindergarten, but also when you talk about behavior within the classroom. We need the assistance of the parents. We need parents working with us, we need parents making children aware of what is and what is not acceptable. And we need parents being receptive to ideas that the teachers, as well as administration, may provide to them and how to help their children make the adjustment to school so that the environment is a positive one for all children who are in the classroom and within the school.
May I, may I add, may I, could you come up here?
Jack is our principal, Jack Melkey is our principal at Girlie Education Center.
Hello, Mr. Chris. What we have done, I'm sorry. When we have our, we have registration in March and also in April, and when we are at the middle school, we will have a fire for readiness curriculum with also already set up two early learning center clubs through United Way, and those are scheduled for April. If we get enough people to sign up at those registrations, we will be getting more of those early learning clubs going. And those are two one and a half hour sessions with the parent and child going into the DC that we're going to host them, but they are also hosted at the PLAM, which is a, over on Nicole Heaven or Nicole Gold, I think it is. Thank you. And so what it is, is just what we're talking about is pre-kindergarten skills, including colors and numbers and letters and shapes. And then they get a Cofac, you have to get, you have to finish the second date and then you get the Cofac to come home with. So there's like a dry erase board and like a placemat with a lot of that information on it. So those are the two things we're doing. I just got contacted by Ellen Alara, who is part of BAST, to talk Thursday morning at their BAST meeting, and I will be talking about preschool or kindergarten readiness at 8:50. So at the BAST meeting, and I was just trying to get my email out to give you the address of where that's going to be. I don't know if that's open or closed. Okay, I'll call you back, thank you. So that's just a small, I know that we had talked a couple of years ago with a whole group of daycare providers, and we were trying to get that off the ground with United Way and, and all the other groups, so I think that's something that we still need to look at.
Laurie, we have a senior here.
Hi, I'm Sunny Anderson, and I just wanted to know, I mean, all these meetings are very informational. I wanted to know if perhaps the next meeting, the 23rd, that that was going to be more a planned action? What exactly are the details and timeframe of what exactly you're going to do? The plan sounds great, the idea sounds great, but specifically what's going to change in the district? How, which ones are going to learn, how they're going to be tested, what they're learning, how teachers are going to be held accountable, what teaching, how they're teaching, what their plan is exactly?
Yes, what Veronica indicated is if you take a look under that third bullet, it says the final action plans with timelines will be presented on February 23rd and March 14th.
Evening, my name is Pegasus Arrow, and I spoke many times before with you. Have a few questions. The first question I have is about the accelerated kids, kids are in AP classes, SLO classes. And we spoke to you at the beginning of the school year about the fourth grade class and big school and the fifth grade of school. I didn't hear pretty much, not a whole lot about those kids. I know I want to focus on the ones who are in trouble or failing or have a necessity to improve, but what we're going to do about those kids are accept the ones that they are in those classes.
Well, what we are, when we talk about student achievement, job one, every child, every chance, every day, it doesn't just mean those children who are below grade level. It means that we also take a look at those children who are on grade level and not say just because they're on grade level that they can't stretch even farther. We need to see how to be optimized and really see that every child is becoming and stretching as far as they can go. Those children who we already know are above grade level, it's also looking at those children and not assuming that if children are really scoring at the upper, upper level of any assessment that we can sit back and say, we don't have to worry about those kids. You know what? Those kids need to be challenged also because if you don't challenge children who are achieving at high levels, that's where many times you see some of your behavior problems occur because children are not challenged. So this plan is talking about all children and how do we meet the needs of all children, those who are not on grade level. I always say that the state test, I consider that to be the floor. And if you have children who aren't even hitting the floor, you've got to take a look at what you need to do to get them to that level. But those children who are already there, and those children who are performing at a higher level, we still have a responsibility to those children and not to rest and say we don't have to worry about those kids. We have, we have a responsibility to stretch those kids even farther and see that they are prepared to compete, not only here within Round Lake, not only here within the state of Illinois, not only within this nation, but on a global level. So what do we know about what kids need to know in order to be able to compete globally? And our responsibility and job is to stretch those children as far as we can so that they can compete with any children anywhere. So therefore, what we will hear also is we come back and take a look at more details of the action plans is work for all children in our district. So enrichment, as well as remediation for kids who are not on grade level.
Okay, the second part of my question is about the parents' involvement. I've seen it already, the presentation, of course, you said you're going to get more details later on.
Yes.
But I just want to make a comment more than a question. I think we really work, we have to work with, pardon accountability. Make sure the parents, they know their kids are challenging and they need to participate in this. Because I think that's the things probably have.
And you're absolutely right. We have to be sure that we're communicating and that parents understand. Definitely, as we held the meeting with BPAC, it was very clear that some of the information that is being sent home, some of the information that's being shared is not always understood, and not only by the BPAC parents, but by other parents. And we assume sometimes the parents understand the information, but they don't always understand. So even though the information has been sent home for years, parents don't always understand what does this mean? And what is it telling me about where my child is performing? And if we're, especially I think it becomes critical, if we see that we work hard to indicating that children are doing well, and yet we assume that the state test and any national test are reflecting the same information, and that may not necessarily be the case. So we have to really make sure that parents understand. We have to help parents to know how to ask the right questions so that when they go to the schools, when they go to parent-teacher conferences, when they receive information regarding testing and they see something that concerns them, who do they go to, who do they ask the questions of? So definitely, we have a responsibility to make sure that there are meetings held not only at a district level, meetings that are held at a school level, and meetings that are held at a classroom level, that we answer these questions. We know that we have the BPAC group, and I know when I spoke with the group, I indicated that we have to take a look at what the agendas look like for those meetings so that we are breaking this information down so that parents can advocate on behalf of their children. Same thing with the PAC, the Parent Advisory Committee or Action Committee, we want to do the same thing. And even as we talk about the parent groups, parent engagement groups that will be established, because we talked about something different that is a part of this plan, establishing these parent engagement groups at each school. This is what some of the work will be that will be going on in those meetings. And keep in mind also, something new, as we talk about what's going to be different, is that our school improvement teams, which exist in our school, which will be moving from the building leadership teams to the school improvement teams, will have parents on those teams. And we need those of you who are sitting here in the audience to express to your building principals that you are interested in being a part of those school improvement teams, where they will be making decisions and reviewing the data there at the school and how students are doing, how the school is doing. So that is something that will be in place as we move forward. There was, do you have a question? Did you have a question?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Stephanie, I'm a parent. The first thing I wanted to say is that in one of the slides it said maximize resources for program needs. How are we going to do that? Because my concern is, I have a son in fifth grade, and I, every year that my kids are in school, which I think is something that everybody should know, that every year I have gone to the classroom and observed my children's teacher. And, and I think that parents should be invited to do that because I've spoken with several parents, my kids are in fifth and sixth grade, and I don't think that people know that they can do that, that they have the freedom and the choice to say, hey, Ms. Smith, can I come in and see what you're doing in class today? And when I was there a couple of weeks ago, I was really sad because not all the kids had a book to read from. The book that they were reading from was from like 1995. And I was really bored in the class. And I couldn't, I kept feeling like, God, what is my son feeling right now? Like, how is he, is he bored? Is he learning, you know, from this book that is almost 18 years old? And that's my concern. I want to see how are we maximizing the resources to meet the need? I have a son that wants to go to Harvard, he's in fifth grade. Is this school district going to prepare him for Harvard? And I, I spoke of that at the principal, with the principal, at a principal coffee. And, yeah, I think I'm doing my job at home, but I, I'm not my child's classroom teacher. So I can do everything I can. So I can do everything I can at home, my husband, my family, to help my son succeed, but is this school system going to help him succeed? And, and that's, that's my concern is that we're talking a lot and this all looks really great and I know that we're gonna have the timelines in a couple weeks, but I hope that the focus is on that, on the curriculum and the resources and the books. They have no math book, he never brings home a math book and, and I'm concerned because what, what if I move and I go, you know, to Naperville? Is my son going to be able to compete with the kids that are going into middle school in Naperville? I fear that he won't and, and that makes me sad because I don't wanna have to move from someplace where I've lived for the last 13 years because my son and my daughter are not succeeding in school. And I think that in the beginning of the meeting, I know somebody had said that they were glad, I think it was you, Stradford, right? That who, you know, people were here and I think that sometimes as a teacher myself, we get frustrated that sometimes parents are not as engaged or involved, but you have to just be thankful for the people that are here and not worry about the people that couldn't come or didn't come. It doesn't mean that they don't care and I think that being here is important even if it was only five of us, that at some point, everybody has to make a change and even if there's only this room full of people and this is the only room full of people that will come for the next five years, I hope that we continue to have these forums that after everything, you know, on March 14th, then, okay, well, here's our plan, we're gonna do it, but now we're never gonna inform you of anything again.
And I will say that, and thank you for your comment.
You, thanks for listening.
Sure. And you know, we were having forums before we started talking about restructuring, so we started having forums last year, there were three forums last year and the first, one of the first ones.
I don't think they were as well publicized as actually this one was, because this one was about 15 phone calls, I think I got, and last year, I mean, I'm calm, so let, you know, so this year is like, oh, let's keep calling them so that they know that we're coming, but.
And I think that we're definitely trying to improve our communication and we have put together communication plans and I think district-wide, as we're advertising a number of things that are going on, that communication has been one of the areas that we have definitely tried to improve. So hopefully, we are getting the word out better this year than what we did last year. I'm gonna ask Veronica to respond to the concern regarding the math textbooks and I, as she indicated earlier, you're doing, you're absolutely right as far as literacy is concerned. And I definitely believe, I was sharing with Nancy earlier, that as I reflect on, you know, how did we get to where we are right now, I think the fact that the district was in financial trouble for a number of years and I think a lot of spending did not take place on a lot of things that we know, being in the education business, that we should have been purchasing textbooks and things along that line, but I really think that, and only the board members can respond to that better than I can. But I think that we really were not spending money and a lot of our books were allowed to become somewhat antiquated and I think even as Veronica talked about, I think she said the math books are no longer being published. We know that with our reading books, that we have not purchased reading books in a number of years. We are, as she indicated, getting ready to make a recommendation to the board in the next four to six weeks for a literacy series that would be up to date. So you're absolutely right, the materials are old and we recognize that and we know also, as we shared, that there's the possibility of spending close to a million dollars to get the literacy books, but it's something that we need to do. So it's not to make any excuses for it, but I'm just reflecting that I'm sure that possibly when we were going through the financial crises that we had, a lot of, there was a halt put to a lot of the spending within the district. So now we are going to get new textbooks. Veronica, I'll ask you to talk about the math books.
Yes, and the first thing I wanna say is that just because we don't, you don't see a textbook there doesn't mean that there's not good things happening there. You know, our teachers are, I mean, I didn't have to give them some credit, they are looking at the state standards, they're looking at what they have to teach, they're looking at how they can plan effectively for what, for what those standards mean and how to teach it. And they may need, they may pull a variety of materials. Even when you do have a math textbook or any textbook for that matter, even when you do have a textbook, sometimes you still have to step outside of that textbook, especially in today's time, to figure out or find materials to make it relevant to that, to that student. So, you know, again, sometimes like for instance, if you want to teach students something about, you know, how to budget or plan, we could get that out of a textbook, but you also could print off a cell phone, a cell phone, your cell phone bill and begin having conversations about that and use those kind of tools. So I think teachers have been using a lot, a lot of things. I don't want us to think that because teachers don't have textbooks that they can't teach.
I agree. I am a teacher, but I don't see any of that happening in my kids' classrooms. I don't see any creative teaching, I don't see any, any teacher teaching to the children's interests or the way that the children learn. I don't see any differentiated instruction when I go in there and observe. I see like Ms. Pierce said, a lot of, a lot of behavior issues from kids that are distracting from other kids. My son came home last week and he happens to be in a class where there are several children, not just one, and he said, he's 11, and he said, how am I supposed to do my job in class when so and so is so disruptive? And he's 11. So, and I get it, I, I know you don't need a textbook, that's exactly what I'm saying. Are we going there? Is the professional development for the teachers to not be boring?
I think the professional development has to be that it would meet the needs of all kids, all style of learners around the content. So yes, the professional development has to be around, it will be around, differentiating instruction. The purpose really for the textbooks is that we have a standard way of practice and a standard set of materials that we use, that we can have conversations around as an entire district about, about what it is we need to teach. And so that's the purpose of the textbooks and, and so they are helpful. Yes, there'll be a lot of professional development, we all need professional development to improve our craft. I would dare say anybody teaching in this Common Core era, even though some of us who have not been in the classroom for a while, as we start looking at some of the things that we're going to have to assess, you know, our eyebrows go up as to wow, you know, what, how would I think about this? How would I plan for this if I were in the classroom today? So we know that we gotta work out, you know, ahead of us, but I also know that our teachers are just as ready as, as parents are to, to have some consistent practices in place, to have those conversations, to learn to teach a little bit differently. So I definitely wanna make sure that we are recognizing what they are up against and, you know, recognizing that they know as well and they say that over and over, we need quality professional development to be able to do this.
I would also add that we do have students who are graduating from Round Lake High School who are going to Brown, to Yale, to top-notch Ivy League schools when they graduate. So we do have students who are graduating and going to some of the best schools in Washington.
Matter of fact, this year we will have our first graduate class, I believe, of Schuler Stiles. We'll have, I think, yeah, from the first group that would have come through our district will graduate this, this month, that's right, we're talking, this college.
We have time for two more questions. There's some up there, Lauren.
Hi, my name is Cindy. I was just hoping that in your presentation, when you did reading and literacy and that there's a strong writing component to the adoption that you're gonna be recommending, because I'm very concerned for the writing instruction that is currently happening.
Yeah, that's why we use the term literacy.
Okay, well, because you just said reading, it's a long rotation, so.
I believe you said, uh, okay.
But I just wanna clarify that it's literacy.
We said literacy throughout.
All right.
My question has to do with the instruction and the testing and then the assessment. After the assessment is done, is there any concrete like procedures for a kid that's maybe that's kind of below average, like after school programs or tutoring that, that instead of saying, hey, he's kind of falling below the testing and put him right back into the, into the classroom again? Is there something special that's set out as a procedure for the teachers and the principals to do for that child?
Yeah, I think what you're describing is what we call responsive intervention and that, that could take, that could take place in a variety of ways. It could happen in the classroom immediately, right then, it could happen through additional support services during the school day as well as some things that happen after school. So I think there'll be a variety of things like that that would occur to help the student get, you know, get caught up on maybe some of the skills that they don't have as well as some of the students who are excelling and need to push forward. Now, our goal is to make sure that we have things in place that you can work with the student who's excelling, that one of the students who is struggling. Some of that may be after school, some of it may happen during school day.
I think there was another question here.
Hi, yes, my name is Misha. I have a quick question and the question that I had, education is moving so heavily in the direction of critical thinking. In my opinion, I do feel as a district we're lacking in some areas where kids are very, are grasping critical thinking and critical thinking comes into play more than just what's in their textbooks, but their decision-making, their confidence, how they're looking at their behavior, their integrity, being able to make those decisions. Oftentimes, sometimes I have noticed or I have engaged with the students as well as parents, where our kids in some aspects don't challenge themselves as much as perhaps they could. And in that lack of challenge, it allows us to almost be at a place where they don't always feel like they can. So being able to practice those areas out a little bit more solidifies what they're learning in the classroom. And then I just wanted to go back, well, the question that I had in that was what are some of the aspects that we're going to be utilizing within the district in the improvement plan? Because technology and critical thinking as well as literacy and the writing are having such huge upheaval and change on what it's gonna look like in the future years ahead when we're going. And then the comment that I had, moving back to the textbooks, one of the things I think sometimes, and it wasn't until more recently, even for ourselves, myself as a parent, I have middle schoolers and high schoolers. Children don't, children are not the only ones that rely on textbooks. Although staff, teachers have professional development and the things that they need in order to be able to present the material in their classrooms, we should expect that students are coming home with practice. We should expect that children are coming home studying for assessments, for tests, for quizzes, for reviews. With those homeworks, it's we as the parent that have to be there to be able to make sure that they're continuing to learn and doing the best possible. Well, what happens when you haven't had that piece of curriculum? What happens when you haven't had algebra in like 17 years and it's totally different? As the parent, you have to rely on that book to be able to go to the introduction, to be able to see the examples, to walk and come with your student because they're coming home to you, the day is over. You can't call your teacher and say, you know what, we can't understand this problem, what are we to do? So we have had my personal failure to rely on when there's questions that we can't answer, then now we have to rely on Google. Because our children don't have books to bring home and you have to hope and make sure you're on the same learning style as what's going on in the classroom.
Well, I, I agree, I see your comment, your comments, so I'd also say you're probably a far better parent than I am because if I had the book, I probably would put it to the side and I would Google. Because reading through the examples and practicing the examples is probably not gonna get us to the answer fast enough, so I'm going to go to Khan Academy where I can see a video of somebody doing it and talk my child through it. I think we're at a critical juncture in education where we also have to rely on different sets of tools to help us, help our children get to an answer. And if, if really this whole Common Core movement, there's a whole lot about that. It's not about being able to always put your finger on the right answer, but it's about being able to use all of your resources to access the best answer or access the process that's gonna get you closer to the best answer, the problem solving, the critical thinking, the kind of stuff we do in the workforce. So it's, it's a, it's a real, it's a balance, a bridge between the old way that we all learned by physically touching pages to a very different way of kind of coming up with a concept in our minds about how this thing happens, you know, how this algebra happens, how it's gonna play out in the real world. So, you know, I, I certainly understand that, I certainly appreciate needing the balance between the two in order to help, help a student at home. But I would also say, you know, there is nothing wrong at all with Googling an answer. I do it all the time. If I didn't do it, we'd lose control at home. Everybody don't have access to it. Well, I agree. Okay, I agree.
Also, just, you know, as we talk about, there's an app for everything, there's also an app for Common Core. So you can see where all of the Common Core standards are for by grade level kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. I have it on my phone now. And so that's something for those who have smartphones, that's something you can download also so that you can see based on the Common Core, where are kids supposed to know kindergarten, where are they supposed to know the first grade, second grade, all the way through. So there are even apps for that. And we are going to just thank everybody for being here this evening. If you have any additional questions that you wanna ask of Veronica or myself, please feel free to approach us. Thank you so much for coming out and we hope to see you on February 23rd or March 14th. Thank you.